I will reconvene this regular meeting of council at 6:30 PM. At this point in time, the town of Smithers acknowledges the Gettymane clan and the Witsowton people on whose unceded traditional territory we work, live, and play. Next up, webcasting the meeting, the public is notified that the meeting is being recorded and webcast globally, a notice of which has been placed on the bulletin board outside of council chambers. Council, we have an agenda before us with no lead items, I believe. I'll look for a motion to approve, Council Raven, Councilor Elliott. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. It went way too far here. So first up, we have petitions and allegations and first up is Northern Edge Sports. So oh. That's before seven. First up is Northern Edge Sport Association Project Update. Come ahead to the speaker. The Flying Soul on this call, word. Um, we do have three counselors online, so if I can ask you to speak fairly close to the mic, it helps a lot. And I'll go ahead.
Do you need me to say who I am? Okay. Testing. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you all for this opportunity to present our delegation today for the Northern Edge Sport Association Expansion Project. My name is Laura Collingwood, Executive Director for Northern Edge Sport Association. And with me virtually and in person are the NISA Expansion Committee members Krista Wink, Stacy Dupree, Darren McMillan, Taylor Kramusa, and Jamie McCartney. So the NISA Project Committee is excited to bring this community project to fruition and create a town-owned legacy facility to serve the region for decades to come. If we can just forward a couple of slides, have a little.
There is a device with you.
Oh, I do. Oh, look at that. Okay.
If you elevate it a little bit.
Next. Yeah, one more, one more. Yeah. Awesome. Thank you. So we'd first like to acknowledge all the completed project successes within phase one of the project. NISA has already committed 146,000 in fundraising and grants toward this phase, which included significant technology and security upgrades, rebranding to represent the expanded programming, 3D architectural schematic renderings, preliminary engineered design planning, hazardous materials, risk assessment, developments, variants permitted, permit approval for the required parking and site planning. And then if I could just forward. So we've been working hard on grant applications for phase two and have received amazing financial support, support from local businesses and groups. Phase two has evolved over this past year for a few reasons and is divided into two parts as funding sources will likely be separate. Phase three is offsite works in anticipation that the town of Smithers may consider contributing to the development of 11th Avenue. It's very difficult for nonprofit organizations to receive funding for municipal road infrastructure with standalone grant applications. If we could just forward through. So the first part of phase two includes adding a 700 square foot multi-use space on the second level of the current facility. So with overwhelming success this year, NISA has added recreational dance programming to its offerings this past fall with its satellite location at the Central Park Studio. NISA plans on bringing that overflow programming back to the facility in this use multi-use space. NISA's fitness programming has increased from four classes a week last year to 23 classes a week this year. At this January, many with waitlists, including fully funded seniors in motion classes four times a week with Taylor. This additional multi-use space will allow the fitness programming to continue with its growth trajectory as well as host community courses, trainings, meetings, and workshops. So we did consult with town staff on code requirements for this phased and obtained contractor contractor quotes and we're seeking final proof for funding. Good switch. So the town of Smithers Energy Audit conducted on the facility this year identified the need for HVAC replacement in the current facility, which resulted in a significant cost added to phase two of the project. The second part of phase two includes a deep energy retrofit of the current facility, replacing the HVAC system, fuel switching from natural gas to electricity, a zero carbon source of fuel. One of the six big moves of the Town of Smithers Community Energy and Energy Plan is to decarbonize existing buildings, encouraging and enabling electrification, supporting deep energy retrofits and fuel switching, improving overall energy efficiency. So currently our facility uses 96% natural gas. Electrifying the facility will drastically reduce the carbon footprint. Phase four to six are the expansion phases, which will require collaboration with the Town of Smithers staff, which we will talk about in the community partnership policy request. NISA requires Town of Smithers discussion just to solidify a final site plan. 11th Avenue has been created as one of the main access points for the site, but the state of offsite work, street lighting and safety risks for pedestrians don't support the amount of current traffic or future traffic. Plans for the expansion include a 5,000 square foot multipurpose space, change rooms, 1,200 square foot multipurpose space on the second level above the change rooms and lobby area, and then an indoor walking track, which would be on the second level of the multi, the large multipurpose space. And then level two, level two just shows the one multipurpose space above the change rooms and then the walking track around the inside of the 5,000 square foot multipurpose space. So NISA has established a long-term operational growth plan by implementing, implementing register, upgraded registration software. So we've upgraded the software to facilitate a large volume of online registration and booking. We've created internal staff development programs to ensure staff are receiving the specific training needs of our organization. And we've expanded employment training initiatives to provide opportunities for staff to increase their certifications and training and diversifying program offerings to meet the long-term needs of the community. So we've just offered a lot more programs. The project aligns with many community needs identified in the Recreation Master Plan. While the Town of Smithers Master Plan provides a high-level strategy, our well-executed renovation and facility addition can deliver similar benefits by concentrating on specific improvements aligned with the community needs and goals, creating a year-round indoor multipurpose space, engaging all ages for recreation options that employ youth, improve health, increase safety and security, and improve user experiences aligned with the master plan. So NISA is currently in step three of the Community Partnership Policy Framework steps, having completed both the project concept and project approval in principle. So we're finalizing the detailed project proposal and we're seeking with Towns, Town of Smithers staff with a community partnership to ensure all municipal policies and bylaws align with the project planning. This year, we regrettably had to decline $120,000 gas tax grant from Regional District for the roof replacement as the timeline and budget frameworks were not in alignment with municipal policies on contractor requirements and for town-owned buildings. So it's our hope that this partnership will increase communication regarding municipal requirements, streamline development processes, and allow the project to maximize funding opportunities. The Energy Audit also identified that a BC Hydro service upgrade to the site may be required with the addition of electrical load to the site with the current development, the housing development, the EV charging stations, air conditioning units, and our future development. So long-term planning with electrical engineers and the municipality is recommended as these upgrades can take a long time. As you can see, NISA has a wide range of user groups, community partners, offering joint programs and shared resources. So the NISA Expansion Committee appreciates all of these corporate sponsors who have financially supported the NISA Extension Project in the early stages. Our next steps for funding and collaboration are submissions of grant applications, community partnership with the Town of Smithers, as well as continued corporate sponsorship recruitment. The strategic priorities plan for the Town of Smithers emphasizes infrastructure and asset management, recognizing the importance of wise decision-making in the development of sustaining sustainability of community assets. We would like to thank council for providing resolutions of support at the last meeting for the upcoming grant applications. Thank you for your consideration of our requests, requests for community partnership, RBA funding in the form of offsite works on 11th Avenue, and collaboration on a funding application for the Canada Community Building Fund specifically for the HVAC replacement. NISA is looking forward to discussing, discussing site remediation requirements as well. Oh, I think that's on the next one. As well as future, potential future combined grant application opportunities for phase five, which is the large phase. So thank you again for this opportunity to present. If you have any questions about the presentation, feel free to ask.
Thank you for the presentation, council. Doesn't look like there's any questions. It was very good package of information and we've got other things to consider tonight as well from staff. So thank you very much for your, and I think we're, the community is excited about the project for sure. Okay, next up, we have the Smithers Skate Park Society with an update. All right, the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Thank you for this opportunity. With me, I'm Sarah Fitzmaurice from the Smithers Skate Park Society. With me is Chrissy Satchak, who is our co-chair, and we also have Brent Hoskins, our electrical contractor for our planned project and to answer any more technical questions.
I don't know if it's. Next.
He's got the power.
Okay. Okay, so this is just a quick summary of what we wanted to present. The first bullet is the phase two project, what features were completed and then an estimated cost versus actual. Maybe we don't need to look at the summary. We could probably just move to the first slide. So now our screen. Yeah. Okay, so completed features for phase two was an eight-foot bowl and also a transition areas between phase one and phase two. So we wanted to tell council that the construction company Radius will be returning in the spring of 2025 to fix four areas with minor concrete cracking. These are pretty minor. It's not something that most users would notice, but we wanted to make sure that the, these areas were fixed to maintain the park integrity as long as possible. Phase two costs were 372,000, actual costs were 394,660.32. So we were over budget by 22,663.2, which we were, we weren't unhappy with that. So, so yeah, we think we did pretty well with our, with our budget versus actuals. Next. So these are, this is a description of the features of for phase three. We're noting the timeline here. We hope to get started in May. That'll be determined by the, the ground when we have a thaw where we can begin. But May through September is the estimated timeline. And some features. So we have site prep and earthworks. We also have the site prep and earthworks, I think, for the most expensive and exciting feature here in this list, which would be the, the lighting. And so we will get started on the site prep for the landscaping, hardscaping and the site prep for the lighting, which we will get give more detail on probably around the same time. There are some other features mentioned here. The shaded structure, a sign which will face the highway and the water filling station and the, the maps that we've provided, I think, call out the location of those features. So the, the total we've noted here is 585,000, quite a bit bigger budget than we had for phase two. And we do have a significant portion of the, the estimate funded by a foundation that we've been working with for a number of years. And they are also a partner in terms of the event that we are excited to host and invite our project partners, including the town to in June. But just two important notes here, 75,000 is what the town contributed in 2023, and that will be applied to the landscaping for phase three. And then I think I mentioned here, the star there, the shaded structure, which you'll find on the drawings is, it has been, we have the funding for that by a sponsor, a great community sponsor who always wanted to be responsible for the shaded structure and we didn't get to build it last year. So we will, we will do that this year. Next. We wanted to mention that we significantly underestimated the lighting. We presented to council in 2022, we, we had some quotes and from a landscape architect who helped us do the research and we just didn't have enough detail at the time and research at the time to know how expensive the lighting of the park was going to be. So we went through a four-month research project and we'll, we'll get into that or below here, you can see the number of collaborators. Or below here, you can see the number of collaborators. We, I think I'm missing the engineer from New Line, but I do, that would be five vendors actually and us. Went through a research phase and where we developed the requirements and looked at solutions and worked with lighting engineers and really got into the weeds more than we even knew was possible. And so we wanted to explain that there was a pretty intense amount of due diligence to choose the solution that we have. And that was really important to us. So we would choose the right solution, but also do that research. So we would understand the costs. And I don't know if you want to say a few words about the solution that was involved in the selection process for the equipment and he's the lighting, the electrical contractor.
So basically, the biggest concern was, I guess it would be called lighting for the neighbors or whatever. So we're not making the neighbors unhappy. So they've used Sea Lux lighting. And we do have a picture of it. The biggest portion is the light levels have to be good enough. Or you can, the kids can get hurt because the lighting levels aren't, aren't good enough. So on this plan, there are 12 25-foot poles and 27 LED light fixtures. Once they're put up, there, there's also options for shades and stuff that you can purchase after the fact. If we do have problems from the highway or the neighbors. These ladies did go to this company and then they basically said, this is kind of what we want. There was a couple of different options of numbers of lamp standards. They had double this in the original one. And I know from personal experience that you're into about $3,000 of the light standard and then a thousand dollars worth of concrete and blah, blah, blah. So we did try and shave it down, but I was shocked at the price. And then I was shocked that they somehow found the funding. So they did pretty good in my estimation.
Chrissy, do you want to say a few words about the, the importance of the light to avoid any kind of like trespassing in the adjacent neighborhoods?
In the neighborhoods or just for like a public safety concern?
I think both those points are really important for council to know.
Yeah, I think it's really important to take note that within the skate park at nighttime and in like our gray season right now, that there are going to be blind spots. So to have that lighting in place for, for public safety, children's safety, our safety is very, very important. And also us just doing our due diligence and making sure that we're not blinding out our neighbors and other community groups around the actual skate park. And it's going to, this lighting is very important too, because we'll be able to put that option out for the other community group users that are building projects within the heritage park that they can piggyback off the initial lighting, right? So it reduces costs as well too for them if they're coming in and putting in a similar like structure or another like apparatus near the skate park where they can actually utilize our lighting structure as well too and piggyback off that.
We wanted to mention that we will be providing the deposit and doing the official order for the lighting equipment this week. And it is, there's quite a long lead time for this equipment. That is, that was required in order to get it by May. So we're very happy. We're able to actually make an official order. Okay, I'm next. I think maybe we've provided the technical drawings in advance. So we will not go into them in this meeting. But, and I think Brett mentioned the kind of high-level points. We should mention that the, there'll be a very simple schedule component. And that we plan to add a much more smart solution after the installation. And that will be defined with, with town staff, but also with the community, the user groups in mind. So that will come at a later date. And we'll also be consulting with the electrical vendor on that. Oh, this is the happy news. So I wish we had our athlete list by tonight, but we should have it soon. We're very excited to, through our partnership with our foundation, bring a group of Olympic level athletes to Smithers in June. I, we have a meeting tomorrow with the Smithers Northwest B C Tourism, because these athletes have their own media team. So we're going to need to be very collaborative with the tourism groups. And we will be, you know, making more detailed announcements soon, but part of the, the trip will be bringing them for a celebration barbecue, which we will invite our, our top contributors and our project partners to. And then the following day will be an event at the skate park. So these are a group of athletes who have agreed to help us bring exposure to recreation infrastructure in rural communities and help us for our phase four expansion plan in 2026. So more, more details on that soon. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. And while I have the mic, it's just amazing how good you guys are. And, and he says, while at raising money, it's been, been humbling to see actually. Counsel, any questions? Counselor Raven?
Not a question so much as just a comment, because as I was looking through your slide deck, the one thing I was curious about was if we have the lights in and then we find out it's too bright or whatever. So I really like that you've taken the time to look at solutions in advance, because I think lighting is very important, but I like that you're thinking of your neighbors. And if things are pointing a little bit in the wrong direction, that'll be a quick, easy fix. But overall, just echoing what Counselor Ray said is, this is just really fantastic to see come forward. And I'm looking forward to see some athletes tearing it up. I will be on the sidelines clapping. I definitely won't be participating, but I think it's just really good to bring to the valley. So good job.
Mayor Atro.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, folks. I just, I did have a question. Oh. Can you hear me? No.
No.
I am not muted.
I can hear you.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'll leave it.
It's from our end. Go ahead now.
No, she's still muted. There we go.
Yeah, I had unmuted myself. It's okay. All righty. Thanks for that. I was trying to say thanks for the presentation. Just a question for clarity on the lighting. I wanted to make sure I understood what you said. So with the heat maps that you've shared with us, does that mean when it is lit, the areas that are sort of blue will be dark? Maybe you could just say a little bit about that. I appreciate you were trying to talk about lighting up your neighbors. But maybe you could just say a little bit more about how that works. Is it the park itself will be lit, but the rest of the park will be dark? Did you want to speak to that? Is it possible to bring that screen up?
Yeah, because we just got in black and white here.
Mr. George is going to bring it up for us.
Oh, it's in the second PDF.
Basically, she's talking on mute.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I know the which colors. There we go. Thank you.
There. So the blue is dark, yes. The, the blue would be the dark versions. Yeah. And then the brightest orange would be the highest lighting.
So if I may, then if I was standing, I don't know, at the arena or across the road on the frontage road, I would see the brightly lit area. But if I was by the arena, I would not be in the light, so to speak. It would be dark in the parking lot. I mean, I get we'd see the bright light, but they're like downward facing sort of lighting where they are.
Yeah, that's right. I, I think the, the, we were very concerned about light trespassing. And so the, the design is, is the, was, is based on not having that as a negative impact for the adjacent neighborhood or the other, or the highway.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much for that confirmation. Appreciate it.
Anybody else, counsel? All right. Well, thank you very much for the update and looking forward to the party.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Blopper. So next up is the public comment period. Anybody that wishes to speak to any of the items on the agenda can do so with three, you have three minutes. I'll call once, twice, three times, no takers. Next up is the spot we reserve for public hearing. I have something to read. The public opportunity to make representations to council regarding bylaw, or 1970 Town of Smithers Business License by law, 1850 Amendment Number 24-01 has been postponed. This opportunity will now take place at the regular meeting of council on February 11th, 2025. Thank you for your understanding. For more information about the bylaw, please contact the town office. All right, counsel. Next up, we have approval of minutes from January 14th. Counselor Raven moves. Counselor Elliott seconds. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? I must be hungry. That's carried unanimously. Nothing to re-release to the public tonight, Mr. Schroder?
That's correct, Deputy Mayor.
All right. So we'll move on to council reports. Counselor Bukama? You're muted.
Nothing to report, Deputy Mayor Ray. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Nothing to report, Deputy Mayor Ray. Thank you.
Counselor Leonard?
Fill in the space. On January 14 to 16, I was in Prince George, attending the Natural Resource Forum with Mayor Atrol and Economic Development Officer Jill Barrowman. So as, you know, I find value in that forum and I've attended now three years in a row and it just seems to get better. So appreciated the opportunity and, and hope to go next year. January 18th, attended a dinner with a lot of my fellow counselors with Brittany Anderson, the Minister of State for Rural Communities. On January 20th, again, with several other counselors, met with service providers supporting the temporary overnight sheltering site, as well as other marginalized individuals in our community. Some good feedback and discussion there. So hopefully that will continue. I have unfortunately not attended a lot of the B V Museum meetings because they are scheduled on Tuesdays when we have council. But Kira Westby asked me to let you guys know she will be presenting the final draft of the Community Heritage Register. I think she's presenting to council at the end of February. But there are two public feedback sessions happening on February 19th from 12 to 2 and 4 to 6. So if anybody's interested in attending that, that's when they'll be happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ray. Nothing to report.
Thank you, Counselor Raven. We have your written report. Well done as always. Did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight one of the items. On the 22nd, the Smithers Art Gallery had their first strategic planning session. They have so much on the books that they're actually going to do two days for strategic planning. But of course, a high priority is securing a space for the continuation of programming through the Creation Station Initiative. And then after I submitted my report on the 24th, I did attend the opening for Thai optometry. They did open up last month with a soft opening, but they did their grand opening. And it's just really neat to see a new optometry place in town. So people have options and they're really happy to be here.
Thank you. As for myself, I attended some of the things that others attended. Yesterday, I attended the Northwest Regional Advisory Committee of N D I T in Mayor Atrol's stead. Because the inputs or intakes have changed, we didn't actually approve any projects, which I couldn't tell you about anyway, even if we did. But the next meeting will be quite packed with projects. And I just wanted to report that Mayor Atrol has been re-elected as Vice Chair of the Northwest Rack. And also she has been elected to another term on the N D I T boards. So congratulations, Mary Atrol. And with that, I'll turn it over to you for your report.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Ray. Appreciate that. And thank you for being at that meeting yesterday. There was also an R B A meeting yesterday, or I would have been there, can't do two things at the same time. So, and just, you know, for council's information, it was not the normal time for the Northwest Rack to meet. The meeting was shifted a couple of times, creating the conflict that doesn't normally exist. And other than that, my report is there. So if there's questions, I can take them. And otherwise, I don't have anything else to add.
Hey, any questions for the mayor? Seeing none, I also note that the, the regular table of items referred to the Standing Committee on Strategic Priorities is there as well. So next up, Gary Director is left anyways, but he did inform me that he didn't want to present to us tonight. I don't see anybody from the Office of the Witsawton. So next up is Staff A Reports 14-1. Recommendation to staff to provide a report to council with more information on Smithers Skate Park Society's delegation request. But it was just for information. Mr. Schroder is there?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ray. This was an option should, should council have wished staff to follow up on any information presented.
Okay, thanks, council. Any, any follow-up one? All right, seeing none. Next up, we have 14.2, report from Mr. Schroder. Recommending that council authorize a mayor and C A O to sign a five-year agreement between the town, the Buckley Valley A I A, and C Bruce for the provision of fairground attendance services. Mr. Schroder, would you like to introduce?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Ray. Briefly, staff was sent away approximately two years ago to assess and come up with an alternative model. As such, we've brought back such alternative model and engaged with the appropriate stakeholders for, and presented this, this document for council's consideration.
Do you counsel any questions or anybody wants to move the recommendation? Mayor Atro.
Sorry, just moving.
All right, do we have a seconder? Counselor Patterson, I think I saw. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Next up, we have a report from Smith. Recommending council provide consent to the R D B N Smithers and Area Victim Services Establishment Bylaw. Mr. Schroder, did you want to?
Very briefly on this one, this is, this is a referral from the Regional District of Buckley and the Chaco, seeking council's consent to the proposed tax, tax bylaw that would increase the total amount that could be taxed. Should council have any questions? Should council have any questions about process or a wish for any clarity, we're happy to provide that.
Counsel Raven. Counsel Raven moves, seconded by Counsel Elliot and Counsel Patterson.
Sorry, Deputy Mary, I should have let you finish the question. So I recognize the amount of money that is described within the report is is quite small in comparison to how much Northern Society for Domestic Peace supports our community. But just a general comment for me, it wouldn't matter for me what the topic would be or how much someone would be asking for. But for example, on page eighty-two of three twenty-five, there's a statement that says the the increased response to requests made by the Northern Society for Domestic Peace to council in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, indicating a growing need for these services in the community. And then it continues on to say that this request suggests that the current funding level may be insufficient to meet the evolving demands for the the area. I would just be interested in maybe I don't know if it's appropriate to invite them to as a delegate to the town. But I'm just trying to understand how much more might be needed in the future, but maybe I missed something.
You were, I believe, still on leave when they presented to the grant to me night. Either one of you wanted to fill in at all?
Just very briefly, they do present annually to council and we look to arrange that in November.
Yeah, and they did indicate a growing need for sure. Mayor Atrell.
Yeah, if it's tall helpful, it is in the report, but it's an odd difference between local government finance and the way the regional district is able to change the taxes. So because it's a bylaw service, there's a there's a restriction on being able to raise that amount. And so also on that that second page, there's a reference for increasing the tax allotment by twenty-five percent. So there are there are different restrictions that the RD faces with its bylaw services. And so this bylaw, the time has come up when the taxation can be increased without going to a referendum, which is a key piece. So you know, without if if the RD rep wanted to increase this beyond this amount, there would have to be a referendum. So periodically, there's a time when it can be increased within the bylaw without triggering a referendum. And so it is a method that's used to provide increased funding from time to time. So we're just in that time right now. So it does recognize that domestic peace has been asking for more money and this is the time when it can be provided. So I you know, I understand what I think I understand what Counsel Patterson is saying. And this is the way that the tool that the regional district has to try to achieve that.
And just sad this, the actual ask will come to us in budget as well. Cause I can't I can't remember the exact amount that was asked for, but it will come to us in budget. Anybody else? All right, seeing no other comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor. And that's carried unanimously. Next up is a report from Smith recommending having five recommendations for council or for janitorial contracts. Mr. Schroder, do we need separate motions or all five at once? That's council's wish.
Certainly, all five can be done at the same time.
Counsel Raven moves all five. Counsel Elliot seconds. Any questions or comments from council? Counsel Patterson and then I
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ray. Question through the staff just on page ninety-two of three twenty-five. There's a statement that says that janitorial services will no longer be provided at Ranger Park as the portion of the property previously clean is now occupied by a tenant. I just wanted to ensure that that was still accurate, given the recent decision around E S S.
Mr. Schroder.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Ray, with respect to Ranger Park. The the first floor will continue to be up, continue to be operated by a tenant, which which would would not receive cleaning services. We will be having discussions with the appropriate departments to make sure that they they have access to the janitorial services that they require for the the basement and the second floor per some of the decisions that were made at the last committee of the whole council.
Counsel Ray.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciated how we were able to see what the different quotes came in at and that it seemed like we're making the best choice for fiscal responsibility. I do like seeing, yeah, multiple quotations come in.
Hey, anybody else? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. And me posed, that's carried unanimously. Next up is fourteen point five, our regular action tracking approval with the recommendation. Does anybody wish to pull any out that they wanted to discuss? Cause that's one of the alternatives or alternatively, we can just move the motion. Sorry, Counsel Patterson moves. Recommendation seconded by Counsel Elliot. Any questions or comments from council? Okay, I do have one, but I'll follow up with staff actually offline. So seeing no others, all those in favor. Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Right. Next up, we have recreation fees and charges by law date. Report from Mr. George. Mr. George, should you want to lead off?
Okay, Deputy Mayor Ray. So this is the first report to council outlining the recreation fees and charges update. In the report here, we have the proposed schedule moving forward. And you'll see a variety of council meeting dates and special council meetings in order to bring this forward prior to our March first Riverside Campground online booking opening there. There's a variety of engagement that we will be reaching out to for the community for the proposed fees. And council will also note a comparison for the fees and charges for our recreation programs that are outlined comparing a variety of other other communities. Open for any questions.
Any questions for us, George? Okay, so the the recommendation is that we provide feedback on the the proposed charges and that we approve the update process. I do have a little bit of feedback and just a little bit concerned. I know nobody else charges for the showers, but when I see how many showers were taken at a dollar apiece, I'm just I I think that, you know, my mind that is there to cover wear and tear on the on the shower facility. So that's just a comment from me. I don't know if others agree, but just like that's a lot of showers and and I know in my time on council, we've had to replace them at least once. So I've been doing it a long time too. So take that under advisement. But yeah, that's the only comment that I had. Aside from I like the work that's been done on the comparisons. There's, you know, maybe some level of service conversations when I look at, for example, what terrorists charges for ball fields versus what we do. Their ball fields aren't in that much better condition than ours and and you know, it'd be interesting. I'm getting too old. You've got a season or so left in me. But at a at one point in time, I would have been okay with paying more and it's we'll get to hear from the user groups. I would have been okay paying for more for a little bit better, you know, some upgrades to the fields or whatever, but again, certainly not complaining about the condition for what we do pay. Mayor Atrell.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Ray. I I agree with your comments. I don't actually have an opinion on the shower fee, but just the notion that we're going to get some public feedback. So when I went through, I didn't have any particular issue. I could see some, you know, some some differences with the other communities, but I'm fine with it, especially in view of the fact that we'll get some feedback. And I think that's always good. We may, you know, I think staff are probably well versed in what the condition of all the different facilities are, but it's an opportunity as well to get feedback on what's working well and what's not. I think, you know, in our best selves, we see value in things that are in good shape and don't mind paying for them. And sometimes we might learn a little bit about things that aren't working well if people are making comments about it. So overall, I appreciate the report. I don't have any trouble with it and I'm really glad for the feedback process. And I don't remember if the motions on the floor, but I'll happily be supporting both parts.
I'll take that as a motion for the second part. The council approved the recreation fees and charges update process moved by Mayor Atrell and seconded by Mayor Counselor Raver. You gotta jump over me first. Any more comments or questions? Counsel Raven.
Just to to echo what's already been said on the floor, but just from conversations I've had with user groups. A lot of them have actually said point blank, cause they don't mind play paying a reasonable amount more just to keep things in just the same condition or actually even trying to level up a bit. I think if we lay it out as we're trying to do good asset management, it would be definitely something that people could get behind rather than just jacking them up for the sake of jacking them up, but just trying to maybe strive for that high bar. I don't think would be a bad thing, but I do love the feedback opportunity. I really like hearing back from the public, but I didn't have any issues and yeah, no, good work.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. And that's carried unanimously. All right, next up is proposed general amendments to the fees and charges by law. Report from Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen, would you like to lead off?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ray. Not much to say. It's been pretty much a a piggyback on Mr. George's fees and charges amendment for the recreation and campground fees. These are just some development services fees that count that staff have been proposing over the past year and we're basically going to combine it in one bylaw amendment along with the recreation fees. So there will be not as much public involvement in these fees as as with the engagement for the recreation fees, but staff will always be welcome for comments from the public as well. So just open to any questions. Thanks.
Yeah, so the same process last time, looking for feedback from us and then there would be a motion to approve the general amendment update process. So first of all, any comments or questions? It's good to see. I I really like this process that that all the fees and and charges are consolidated in one by law. I think it it works really well. So I did wanna wanna do that. Would somebody like to make the motion then? Counsel Raven moves that council approved the bylaw nineteen forty-one general amendment update process, seconded by Counsel Patterson. Any further comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. And then opposed, that's carried unanimously. Next up, I think, yes, a report from the Spadell regarding a disaster resilience and innovation grant. And I believe, Mr. George, do you wanna introduce that? Oh, sorry, Mr. Allen, sorry. I I get confused sometimes who's who answers to.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Ray. I could just speak a little bit on this. It's natural assets are becoming a more important item for the town, especially when we're applying for grant applications for capital projects such as the the one that we're currently working on, the Riverbank Erosion Protection Project. In the new grant applications, there there are are we're already seeing in staff some areas that require the municipality to to report on or to state what the town is doing with their natural asset management. So this will be the first step in in securing an asset management plan for our natural assets. And this is things like the river drainage assets through our the three creeks that we have our storm systems emptying into our our potable water aquifers that we draw drinking water from, that type of thing. And this project firstly will be to create a proposal that the the grant application is with U B C M through their disaster resilience and innovation funding. And they've basically already approved ten thousand dollars support from the grant program to create the proposal for the actual grant application itself. And because due to the short timelines, staff did reach out to consultants to create the proposal and awarded it to urban systems. So that and that at the amount was about twelve thousand six hundred and that's in the report. The remainder can be covered by the towns or from development services contracted services budget. So if we're successful on the on the grant itself, which is up to a hundred and fifty thousand to do the whole natural asset inventory and plan, then that will go out to a full public request for proposals for for actually creating the plan. I think that's all I had. So open any questions. Thanks.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing then I'll look for a mover. Counsel Raven moves the recommendation and Counsel Elliot seconds. Anything further, Counsel Raven?
I'm just a comment that I really like to see this coming forward. I remember it was right after I started on council. One of the first things that I went to, they had mentioned natural asset inventory and I was kind of confused and had to be the person that asked the question of what that was. But it's coming up more and more. And then when I was at F C M last time around, there was definitely seemed to be a lot more focus and it was coming up. So I like that we're working on that and we're not going to be caught later on going, oh, this is something we should have done. So I like that we're applying for this.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Anybody opposed? It's carried unanimously. Counsel, how is everybody feeling? This next one might be a little more of a discussion. We're okay to keep going. All right. So next up is a report from the Smith recommending council direct staff to report back on the next steps for Nisa to enter into community partnership with program with the town. Mr. Schroder, did you want to introduce?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Ray. I I certainly would like to. This is largely a point in time update for council, trying to tie in a handful of conversations to help council understand the current status of the Nisa Nessa project from an administrative town of Smithers standpoint. At this time, we are recommending that a further report be provided to council, just detailing the specific next steps that would be taken associated with the community partnership program, clarifying where we are in that process. As council may have noticed, we did include a brief summary of the legislative history that summarizes what motions council has made to date. Further to that, the report attempts to provide council with some information about some of the the benefits, potential risks and some of the other associated activities that are a lot that are a request from NASA to the the town of Smithers.
So just to be clear, that the there were requests that were in the delegation tonight will be addressed in in the report as well.
In the follow-up report, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Staff and or staff council, any questions of staff? I'm Mayor actual.
Yeah, thanks, Deputy Mary Ray. Mr. Mr. Schroeder through the chair, I've just had one question for clarity, and this is on the second page of the report under the community partnership program. And there are the six points there. So from the perspective of the town. Uh, we're we're just and we're discussing getting into this. We're not actually on, we we're not within this program, so I'm not articulating this very well. So it may be that a high level description of the project has been received, but have we done an approval of principle? Like, where are we in that? Sorry, very murky question.
Mr. Schroder, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Deputy May Ray into the question. There was a motion in. On on made on January twelfth, twenty twenty one, uh, in which a resolution of support for the project in principle was provided. And a further to that, some additional. Resolutions have been made that note the word approval in principle, um, which varied the original approval presented. From a staff perspective. We note that it's very unclear and and murky as to exactly what approvals have been provided. Uh, and this is something that we would be working with NASA to uh, to work through as a part of the the next steps. And we would clear and we would look to clarify that exact position as to where NASA is that within a follow up report. Uh, in this one, from 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 staff's perspective, we do think that there is some some more work to do and unofficial. Approval and principle from the the current council to be provided to the project.
Okay, thank you. If I may, just then I I'm going to interpret that from my murky question. That we're at the top end of a community partnership program that we're. A a motion from twenty one was a project vastly different than what it is now. So, okay, I just wanted that clarity. Thank you.
Counsel Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Ray, a question through to staff, just more broadly around the community partnership program. Where it actually references the policy and says that community partnership to support is to support communication and provide a development process. For the communication component, does that include with all community members as well?
Largely no, um, the the communication process is just a way to ensure that the the project has a direct link to administrative staff. To provide information about development process. Clarify questions about town requirements for the project itself. The 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 work associated with any consultation or engagement to the of of with the public would be the responsibility of the the. Partnering community organization.
Perhaps maybe thank you for reading my mind, Deputy Mayor Ray. So. When we enter into this process, recognizing that Nisa has done, um, just an incredible amount of. What I would foresee as community engagement. Will there be an opportunity for us as council to? Just have that discussion as far as ensuring that if there's any significant concerns, not suggesting that there may be. But that we, I'm guessing, have an obligation to ensure that we address any of those concerns. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Uh, absolutely, it certainly does. To the question, yes, there will be a. Handful of critical steps associated with the community partnership program. That would be approval of the project concept and approval in principle of the project. Further, council would have an opportunity to to review the detailed project proposal, which. May include information about an engagement engagement. Events that may be included. Further, council could request engagement events be included as a step. Uh, in the project at that at that approval.
Anybody else? Okay, so anybody want to make the motion? You want this last question first?
Uh, well, not not a questionist, a comment is I'm I'm just really curious and I'm really looking forward to the risk considerations. Because there is the liabilities that are laid out. So I know that's that's one of the things that I'm kind of looking forward to. I'm piecing out and I do appreciate how Mayor actual mentioned is. Cause the the project has changed even since I've been on council, like from the first presentation to now, there's been a few things that have come up, some good that we're going to streamline that and just make sure that everyone's all on the same page. But I am willing to make the motion.
Okay, the recommendation has been moved by Counsel Raven. Seconded by Counsel Elliot. I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, I it has changed, but it's changed. Due to community demand, I think. And but there are questions around. Particularly the site itself that raised questions, so hoping to see that those kind of answers in the report. Anybody else with any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? And that carries unanimously. All right. Uh, next up, we have a report for information. About Nisa's proposed building expansion offsites works. Mr. Allen, did you want to speak to it?
I know I don't have any to add to it. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, um. I'm I'm gonna look to staff for a little advice on the chairing here. So are we going to, we'll see the. That will be in the report that we just requested as well, kind of the. Possibilities for RBA.
Yeah, so essentially with this one, Nisa did come to council prior to the holidays. With some specific questions, and so this was an opportunity for us to provide that information back to council as well as put it in the public sphere for Nisa. Um, and everyone else, but certainly as we move forward with the previous. Actions that are associated with the previous or motion from fourteen nine. Certainly, this information will be brought to council so that there's a comprehensive picture of what the proposed expansion looks like. And what the the proposed there with expansions impacts could have and all the different aspects. So certainly we'll be bringing these considerations back as we carry the conversation.
Okay, thanks. Counsel, any questions? Um, thank you, Mr. Allen, for the report. It's it's always interesting to see with any project, the longer things go on, the the more the costs go up. Uh, Mayor actual.
Yeah, thanks, Deputy Mayor Ray. This may, this might come out murky too. It's a bit of a convoluted thought, but I think. You know, the previous motion sets the stage for staff to be able to bring a lot of things back. And, you know, I I do recognize the work that the folks have been doing to move this project along. But, oh, there's so much that's that's become entwined in these discussions as we go forward. That I, which is why I asked about the community partnership. That the project has morphed, um, you know, it's even to request for specific funding councils made decisions on offsite works before. Like, we're going to have to get a real handle on what's what we're talking about. What the potential costs are and then put that against our budget and assets as or our financial ability as a municipality as well. So I think there's good information in here. It has taken a long time and the project has changed and the circumstances for the municipality have changed as well. So I think allowing that information to come forward, we're entering into our budget discussions. You know, it's it's a good time to have all this information. And I think there's a lot of history there that we're going to consider as well as we see that staff report when it comes forward. I'm not sure if that's helpful, but I think. It's it's kind of deep and complex with a very long history. And a lot of work behalf of community, but at the same time, we have a responsibility to sort of manage the project, what we might accept through a community partnership. And how we manage the finances with all of the things that we're feeling, you know, that we all know are coming.
Thank you. And and just while you're here again, we appreciate the work that you've done on behalf of the community and. And share a bit of your frustration with how things have changed, how situations have changed and. Thank you for hanging in there and we'll be working on this soon. Uh, next up, we have correspondence save for action. For a report from or a letter from Terry Robert of NCLGA inviting us to attend. At online. Advocacy session. Oh, Mayor, Mayor actual is gonna do a better job than I am.
I'm not sure that's true, actually, with the way I've been jumbling things. The reason I asked to have this put on the agenda is that the the letter had been received and. Counsel Patterson has received it as well, so I did check to see why only Counsel Patterson and myself had received it. It was only they're the only emails that NCLGA had, and so I just thought this could come forward to the council table. This is going to be something that's ongoing. I think that's the current direction of NCLGA. But I just thought, you know, out of fairness for all of council. It's not just about the two emails that were there, but rather that all of council could see that there's something going on. You know, and there's some invitation here for folks to participate if they choose. And as a member of NCLGA, I'll be attending the meetings as well under the hat at the board, so hopefully that helped, might not have.
Um, sir, just one question, Mayor actual, is there a cost for counselors to attend?
Uh, this would be virtual, at least as far as I know, this is virtual. Um, I think, you know. Symposiums and events aren't virtual, but most of the planning that's done at NCLGA is virtual. People come from across.
Okay, thanks. So I just wanted to make sure sometimes even virtual things, there's a nominal fee and if we're watching our travel budgets, et cetera. Um, so there's really no action, Counsel Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Ray, and I think this is more of a procedural question, perhaps through to staff or to her worship as a as a member on the board. For example, when I look at the second bullet around coordinating advocacy campaigns and support letters. I have expressed an interest to the CEO and Mayor actual in attending these meetings, just having attended the recent conference and being inspired by some of the conversations. In signing on as a signatory, but I would be curious as to advice. As to how we would approach those things, maybe pre or or post meeting, just to ensure that it's the will of. Counsel and not necessarily maybe just one individual. Um, and and we don't have to have that conversation necessarily this evening, but just wanted to say that I would be thinking about that if I was to attend. Thank you.
Yeah, I looking at the topics, I think that's probably part of what will come as advice from the the NCLG presenters is. As to how it can be moved forward. Sorry, Counsel Raven.
Um, one question, so I, because there are no dates on there because it's a doodle poll. Would it be possible for these opportunities to be put into the council calendar and if people are available, they can attend and then if it just doesn't work, it doesn't work?
Um, Mayor actual.
Yeah, sorry, the date was. Uh, the date was selected through the doodle poll, so the first meeting, I believe, is on January thirty first. And I I think the answer is probably yes. I would say. You know, it's just getting going and sometimes, you know, a lot of people observing a discussion is one thing. But also a discussion that might have, I don't know how many people are going to be there, but sometimes like six people is a good discussion and sixty people aren't. So I don't know how to answer that. Um, I don't think there's any harm in people, you know, folks want to sign up. But I think that whoever takes the helm of this may have an opinion. On how many people, you know, are useful in a conversation. I just don't know that yet. This will be the, you know, the the first planning session post symposium, which was the first symposium, so there's still a lot of learning to do.
And thanks to staff, the staff were the only ones that teased out the date in the header there. I was looking through the letters and I'm like, I don't see a date, but. I appreciate that. Uh, next up are the correspondence be for information. Does anybody on council want to pull any of them out? Mayor actual, is that a hangover hand or is that a new hand? Nobody wants to build, bring any out. Okay, and there is no late items, so next up is a German. Moved by Counsel Raven. Seconded by Counsel Elliot, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you to our online attendees. Appreciate having you up on the screen there.
Thanks for sharing, appreciate that. See everybody.
Thanks, thank you.